All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And invited by the stand for a moment of silence and a pledge allegiance. Just a couple of brief messages invited by that's here today to turn your cellphones on silent or cut them off for the duration of the meeting to event those distractions. Board meetings are broadcast live over Comcast 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 32 and are streamed on district resite as well as recorded for future broadcasting. So I guess at this time I'll turn it over to John for this budget work session number two presentations.
Thank you, President Price. Tonight we have four different presentations. It consists of our technology, our curriculum, special services and federal programs. These are probably the four largest, the most complex sections of our budget presentation. Accordingly, the presentations are pretty lengthy and very detailed. Our last one is on our federal programs. That one is very detailed, very confusing. I apologize, but there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that we want to explain to you in terms of what are recurring costs, what are non-recurring, and some of the decisions the board will have to make moving forward on some of the things that were implemented this year and what the board wants to continue with and what the board would prefer to see go away after the ESSER funds are exhausted. So up first is Mr. Camerano in charge of IT. Nick, you're up.
Great, so I'm going to jump right in. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions, comments, thoughts. Maybe? Any luck? No. Okay. What are you going to do?
Maybe we should get our IT department on that.
So start off just to kind of discuss the scope of what IT encompasses. So a lot of the things that are really obvious, end-user devices, so Chromebooks that students have, teacher laptops, all the labs throughout the district, as well as our core infrastructure. So that's our switches, wireless hotspots, servers, things like that. That's a photo of one of our data centers, so very enterprise level. We have a number of cloud services, core operational systems. A lot of that is through our vendor partners and in addition to some of those cloud services. We've got our district phone and communications and then the point-of-sale systems in all of the cafeterias. So some considerations as I go through here. To keep costs down, one of the things that we really needed to do was shift more to a reactionary stance. And that's, it's a little unfortunate, but the cost of being proactive is much higher. So anticipating needs and replacing things upfront is a much higher cost than kind of waiting till things break and then replacing them as they go. So you'll see some, a little kind of mix of both in this presentation, and that was done to keep costs down. Another thing to keep in mind is inflation is at, of course, an all-time high, and that hasn't been entirely baked into every line item within this presentation. So there is some space within the repair, device repair and replace option to be able to pull potential funds out to cover some of the inflationary costs. And then in general, supply chains have been problematic for two years now on the IT side. Buying anything has been very difficult. So it's been taking months. Some things are even taking over a year to get things in.
Hey, Nick, can I hold you up for a second? Can you just clarify that for the public, the reactionary, that we still are proactive in certain areas where we can be? We're not 100% reactionary before we get all the responses like, oh, my God, they're always... Can you just clear that up a little bit for us?
Sure, 100%. So all of our core services, of course, we're on top of and keeping everything running. The reactionary piece is more on replacing devices, end-user devices, including labs. So trying to get the most time out of all of our devices as possible. But all of our core services that are critical are always upfront and proactively maintained. Go ahead. Okay. Try it again? Nope. There we go. So here's some of the highlights. Looking to maintain the one-to-one Chromebooks for grades seven through 12. Purchasing Chromebook chargers and parts. Asset tagging and inventory management, that's something that, you know, we've really got to get a handle on. And we need a new system to be able to do inventory management to an enterprise level. And then Chromebook carts for elementary school. On the network side of things, we've got a number of network upgrades that we want to do throughout the district and then replace our battery backups for a lot of our core systems. They've been neglected for some time. Modernizing some of our systems, so I mentioned the inventory piece, that's one of the keys things in getting our one-to-one to be clean and controlled. So we really need to get that in place. And then cloud migration for as many services as we can. So I showed you our data center that's on-prem. We really want to take as much as we can out to the cloud for the security of it and also to be able to operationalize the costs. Right now, our servers are very expensive and need to be replaced every five years. If we can build in a yearly fee, then we can basically have a consistent cost throughout. So it's much easier to budget for rather than getting hit with a giant charge every five years for that. And then enhance security through our Darktrace appliance and the security camera upgrades. So here is the total IT budget or proposed IT budget. You'll see the device repair and replacement, a little under 300K. 1.4 for our core services, infrastructure and support. ARP-ESSER is the federal grant, and so that's 200K coming out of that grant. ATSI is also another grant that's a set aside, and we'll get into that shortly. So you'll see the total operating capital and grant funds broken out, and overall, the entire IT budget comes in at just under 2 million. So under the device repair and replacement, you'll see that we've got 115K set aside for whatever breaks. So this is kind of encompassing everything that isn't specifically spelled out over the next few slides. I'm essentially going to go through all of our line items one by one for transparency so you can see the cost of everything we're buying and what we're getting for those dollars. This is the fund where we don't know what's going to happen. So just recently, we had to replace AC unit inside of one of our data centers that was close to $10,000 repair. So we've got various costs like that that, on the face of it, seems like it might fall under a different department, facilities or something like that, but it's really an IT cost because it's a specialized component that lives inside the rack of our devices. You'll see we've got 108,000 set aside for teacher laptop replacement. So prior to this year, we had a replacement cycle for teacher laptops, and we had slated for this coming year for grades four through six teachers to get their devices replaced. Due to the kind of ballooning costs of all of our services, we decided to move that. That's one of the reactionary pieces where we're going to move. So we won't be proactively replacing all of the teacher devices for grades four through six in this coming year. We'll be purchasing some devices to address the ones that are in the worst space so that we can make sure that everyone has a functioning device. Below that, you'll see two different lines for repairs for laptops. They're two different categories because of the different insurances we've bought on devices throughout the past few years. The inventory, that would be outsourcing the inventory of all of our Chromebooks. Devices have been handed out over the past few years and especially during the pandemic in a very quick and aggressive manner, and we really want to get a handle on our inventory. So we've got device assignments listed in our current inventory system, you know, with this device is assigned to this student, but we haven't seen that device in some cases almost three years. So we really want to get our hands on everything that we have to ensure that it's all still here and all still in working order. So that's something that we really want to take care of this summer. And then we want to move toward metal asset tags for our Chromebooks. Right now, they're paper asset tags that are easily peeled off and makes accounting for our devices a little bit more difficult. So moving in that direction will help us with inventory as well. And then you'll see the Chromebook replacement of 200,000 coming out of the ARP-ESSER grant. So going through our core services, infrastructure and support piece, I'm going to kind of go line by line, and so if you have any questions, you know, feel free to jump in. So starting off, GoGuardian, that is our filtering for Chromebooks. Sapphire is our student information management system, so that's got all of our student data in there. EdLeo is our district website. Time Clock Plus is for staff to clock in to keep time. That's our Microsoft agreement for all of the Microsoft products that we have throughout the district. Acteon is our vendor partner for our phone line services and phone system in general. PAETEP is keeping track of the teacher evaluations and the various records that go along with that. Navigate is our incident response system. Raptor is for checking visitor IDs when they come to buildings to make sure that they're safe to be in our buildings. Exact Vision is the camera licensing for our cameras throughout all of the district. Edge Log is the bus mapping software and bus routing software that we use. The Tax Trac software is exactly what it sounds like, tracking taxes. Rapid Identity is software that ties a lot of our other software together. So we have a lot of things that wouldn't necessarily work together, but using Rapid Identity, we can tie various softwares together to make them so they communicate and update at the same time. Darktrace is a security appliance that we have, and that's a very nice proactive device that helps for cybersecurity. It has machine learning built into it, and it basically monitors all traffic coming into our district and anything on our network to see things that are out of the ordinary. And it helps keep us safe from events that other districts have experienced. And OneRoster is a rostering tool that helps to communicate from Sapphire to some of our other systems where, like class rosters, need to be used. Talking Points is communication software that you guys are very well aware of, that we brought on recently. Sapphire Communication is another communication platform, but is different from Talking Points. Talking Points is for teacher use. Sapphire Communication is more for district level and administrator use. Asset Tiger is our current asset management software. And Incident IQ is the inventory software that we want to move to as well as a new help desk and ticketing solution. So right now, our ticketing solution and help desk doesn't tie into our inventory software, and so we have incomplete records of what's been done with different hardware. If we can move to Incident IQ, we'll be able to get a ticket, help desk ticket on a device. Once that's tracked, it immediately puts it onto our inventory side, too. So we know at any time we can look up a computer, we can see what's been done to it through the whole time, so we can kind of track and forecast a lot better of our replacement needs and just our overall cost of ownership of devices. Maraki Licensing, that's the licensing for our access points and switches, and that's a yearly fee there. T-Mobile's for our mobile device costs. The E-Rate consultant fees, E-Rate is a federal grant that we file every year that helps pay for our internet services as well as a big portion of our networking equipment. And so the E-Rate process is fairly complicated, so we use consultant to make sure that we file everything completely correctly. That's what that fee is there. Arwan is our local fiber network costs. Chadwick, that's preventative maintenance for our HVAC in the various racks throughout the district. The Remote Access, that's the VPN service that we use for employees to be able to get to network services off-site. Jamf is the asset management software specifically for Apple devices, so that includes iPads, iPhones and the MacBooks. The APC is the UPS management that we have a vendor help us work with. The Fortinet is our firewall. VMware is our virtual software license so that we can run virtual servers all on the same physical server box. The Ford Analyzer is along with the Fortinet, so that's the licensing for the firewall. Lexus Nexus is what our residency officers use to look up people in the community and where they live. And eFinance and TalentEd, those are two of our core services here. TalentEd being for our HR management and the eFinance side for all of our financing. The PrismWorks Veeam Backup, that's for what you'd expect. It's for backing up data from our servers and the maintenance and license for those servers. School Dude is what the maintenance department does for their help desk ticketing, so all the maintenance help desk tickets go through School Dude. Our Proliant Servers, that's a service agreement to keep our very aging servers in good working condition. The small cost for that remote user, that's for our Windows remote management. Below that, you'll see the Web Help Desk. That's our current help desk solution, and that's what we're trying to migrate away from to move to the Incident IQ. The Sunisys Crown Castle, that's the entire fiber throughout our network lease cost. The UPS for Valley, so that's a contract to keep the UPSes functioning at Valley. Below that, you'll see the live stream, the yearly subscription fee is there. Windstream is the phone service for the entire district. Xerox, we use a program called Paper Cut that helps manage all of the printing to our copiers so we know what users are printing what, and we can kind of control that to keep costs of paper and toner down. Below that, you'll see four items for Zoho. It's a suite of services that do various things. So we've got the Exchange Reporter that manages, that sits over top of our email system to help query that. We've got our password vault, so we've got various users that keep passwords located in that district-wide. And then the Active Directory Manager and Auditor are tools that the team uses on-prem. Penn Link is the notification system that we get through the state for various jobs and things throughout the Commonwealth. And E-Rate Equipment is all of the networking equipment that we're looking to purchase going forward. So we currently pay 20% of the total E-Rate costs. So E-Rate's a federal program. They pay 80% of our costs for our internet and for our access points and switches. And so we want to replace some switches and access points, and that 130 would be our 20% for that cost. We really get a lot of bang for our buck out of that piece. App Garden is software that's used for volunteers within buildings. Comply is used from the HR department for teacher licensure. Nimble is another server tool to help manage our servers. And then Stewart, we use for software maintenance and support for our copiers when we have some issues. Bombgar is a remote desktop solution so that we can remote into users' machines remotely and take care of things without physically tracking them down. The GoDaddy Renewal, that's our website license to keep our main website up as well as our certificates that ride on servers to make sure that we can talk to other services. Below that, you'll see the door access licensing, so all of the swipe cards have licensing fees to the individual units on the doors. And then we have a contract with Sage for door access control support when we have issues there. And then below that, we also have a contract with Sage for AV support. So for the announcements at schools, that's what that's for. And then Zoom, you're very well aware of Zoom, I'm sure, probably very sick of it. Also, the one below that is...
Same thing ever happened from COVID.
Nutanix, this is something new for this year. This is, we really want to migrate a lot of our physical servers offsite. And so to do that, our servers are at five years old at this point and are really up to be replaced, but we can get out of that large, one-time replacement cost if we move into more of an operational. And so the cost to do that's going to be 85,000 a year versus about 250, 300K upfront to replace those servers. Who Knew It is forecasting software for enrollment within our schools. And then below that, you'll see UPS replacement, just district-wide, in areas where we currently have very ancient UPSes for systems that maybe not have been critical enough to keep on service contracts. Capital expenditures, I've got very, very few here. The CAD Lab, that was something that was approved at last month's meeting, and so that will likely, if we can get the machines in, be coming out of this year's rather than coming out of next year. And then we wanted to purchase additional Chromebook carts for the elementary school. So again, here's the totals, and I know one thing we haven't discussed yet is the one-to-one, and I think there's a lot of questions around that and where that's going and what that's going to look like. And that's where I'm looking forward to some feedback from the board. So I'll kind of get into the overall cost of that and what it looks like for a few different options. Potentially. Oh, sorry, I'm going to go into... Let me go back. So I did have a handful of things that didn't make it into this budget but are also very important and things that the IT department would really like to do. So this is sort of an extra menu list if the board would like to add in additional funds to cover some things. And there's some things that we really want to get done, but understand that things are expensive and already with inflation and some of the things that we've added may not be something that we can do this year, but we certainly want to try to get these done if possible. And one more. Okay, so you'll see here we've got technology peripherals. So this would be things like extra dongles and adapters. Right now, we don't really have extras for these types of things. So when they break, if a teacher's dongle goes down, if we don't have something, then we need to order it, and they end up not being able to access their class. So in the short term, we've been pulling from our like fix-and-replace fund, but we really like to have a set aside specifically for peripherals. We also would like to be kind of more proactive here and to try different things out. So purchasing different prototypes of things that may make teaching easier, but until we kind of have the things in our hand, we don't know if they work in our environment. So that's what that cost there is. Overall, we had a replacement equipment cost that we were kind of specifically targeting the machines that, or the equipment that often gets overlooked. So this would be a lot of the secretary machines and machines that sit outside of the instructional world. So we have a lot of machines that are sitting at seven, eight years old that we've been sort of just, you know, forcing along that we would like to replace if possible. You'll see three lines there for Chromebook replacement. These are different funds that are set aside, so that the first line, that 155,000, that's a grant that's set aside specifically for the high school, so it needs to be spent there, and it can be, or it can be kind of held for another year for additional replacements. And then we've got the ARP-ESSER funds, which is a little bit less than that. We've had to move some things around, but it's still sitting semi-near that for Chromebook replacements. And I'll come back to the Chromebook piece after we kind of go through the rest of this list here. One thing we don't have is a mobile AV solution. So right now, anytime that we have an event that doesn't take place in an area where we already have speakers and a mic set up, we've got to take things apart to essentially go set things up. So right, we've got speakers on the stage at the high school that are essentially monitors that are used for performances in the auditorium. That's the equipment we use when we need to be in a different location. If there's a presentation going on outside or something, we'll take that equipment. But that, we haven't run into a problem yet, but we may run into a problem where we want two events to go on at the same time, where we've got that separate event we're trying to do as well as something in the auditorium. So it would be great to have something that was set aside specifically for that. And then also looking at trying to buy microphones that can handle wind. Right now, we have our, the mics that we would bring outside are the same ones we use indoors. They're not designed for windy times. I'm sure you guys have all been a part of presentations where, that take place outside, the mic cuts out 100 times, you can't really hear what's going on. So we want to get something to kind of fill that need. You'll see we've got the properly installed livestream unit in the auditorium. We've actually taken care of that with some end-of-year funds this year, so that can kind of get crossed right off. The wireless mics in the high school gym are aging. That's something that we would like to get replaced as well. Professional services, it would be great to have a vendor partner come over and help the team with firmware upgrades and security upgrades to any of our on-prem devices. So that would be the remaining servers that stay on-prem as well as switches and things like that to make sure that we are up to date in all of our security posture as possible. Display replacement for Snyder, they have, for the most part, they have projectors on desks and tables and things as well as a handful of older projectors that are mounted on the ceiling. So we'd like to clean those up and get that building set up in a more professional manner with, we want to get displays similar to what we have here in the boardroom in each classroom. Professional development for the team, the IT team pretty much just learns what we need as we go, for the most part, just trying to find answers on the internet, working with other districts, outside connections that we have. But some formalized professional development for the team would be helpful. And then additional carts for the elementary school. District-wide, we don't currently have a replacement cycle for projectors or displays in general, and we have quite a few projectors that are on their way out. And so we wanted specifically to set aside funds to replace aging projectors with 75-inch displays like you see here. Also thought it would be great to have a livestream solution for the stadium. Right now, that's not something we have. In the past, we've basically taken equipment out of racks to try to make things happen out there, but it's really not best practices when we're taking a $15,000 device and kind of carrying it around and, you know, moving it back and forth, plugging things in and out. Really like to get something permanent there. Tablets for grades K and grade one students, so that would be instead of Chromebooks for those students, they would have Chrome tablets, which would be a touchscreen device that they would use. Security cameras, upgrades and repairs. Can kind of ignore this line for right now. We've got, coming to Business Affairs next month, you're going to see a pretty in-depth proposal for a number of camera and security upgrades throughout the district that I think we can look at doing with capital funds over a five-year period. The bus Wi-Fi plan, so we were able to get bus Wi-Fi through the ECF grant last fall. So to continue that forward, we would need to pick up the tab after that as the grant only paid for the first year. The next three you'll see are labs, and these labs are at five years old this June. So we would like to replace the high school graphics lab, the high school Photoshop lab and the OTN lab. Network support, this would be a nice-to-have. Network support, this would be a nice-to-have. Our, our infrastructure team is pretty small. And being able to have support already queued up in the event of a major issue would be very helpful to be able to pull those people in very quickly. Chromebook charger replacement, looking at a cost, or we're, we're kind of anticipating about a five percent loss of Chromebook chargers. And that we're, we'll really know what that answer is once we collect all the devices at the end of the year through that full inventory piece. And looking at a yearly line item for, for Chromebook charger replacement. Right now, that'll need to come out of the, the fix and replace fund, kind of the catch-all that I discussed earlier. And that hundred and sixty-six thousand, that's the remaining amount necessary if we wanted to fully do the replacement laptops for grades four through six. So I had that, I think it was a hundred and six K. And originally for that, with an additional one sixty-six, we could, we could keep our current replacement schedule on track. And then you'll see the keyboarding lab as well at the middle school. And to clarify, that's the keyboarding, it's a music class, not typing keyboarding. So the one-to-one Chromebook piece, there's a few different ways we can do this. So what I've presented here kind of throughout this budget has these assumptions. So it's a one-to-one Chromebooks for grades seven through twelve on a three-year refresh cycle. Cost of a Chromebook is approximately four hundred dollars. So the device itself is two hundred and fifty. Got the Google admin license is thirty-five, the white glove configuration at ten, and then the three years of ADP for a hundred. The ADP is accidental damage protection. And what that is, is we're essentially paying upfront for the insurance for the device. Right now, the majority of our devices don't have that on it. And we are currently in-house replacing every item as it breaks. And so to forecast what costs are going to be is incredibly difficult. As well as, this takes time away from the team when they're physically repairing screens and replacing keys, that they could be out doing more in-depth IT work, trying to get our systems more efficient and a better use of their time. So if we move to-
Not to interrupt you, but how significant has that been? I can't imagine kids are being real careful with these Chromebooks. So could you give us an idea what the percentage of repairs might be, just the ballpark?
Sure, about a hundred percent is, is what we estimate. It's legitimately a hundred percent correct. It's, the repairs are, are excessive. And, and going in, and I've worked in a handful of districts, also discussed this with a, a lot of other districts, and that's, that's really right in line. It's amazing how much those repairs can be. And the Chromebook has become so critical for student work that, you know, we, we've got to replace it as quickly as possible. So we, we'll have a student that, that breaks while we, you know, we do what we can to try to get a replacement in their hands as quickly as possible. And so that's why you'll see below that, the enrollment plus ten percent. So ultimately, we need to get ten percent over enrollment to ensure that kids always have a working device in their hand. So we can't just buy one per student, we've got to have extras to be able to swap them out. So ultimately, if we have thirty-four hundred Chromebooks for grades seven through twelve, it, it'll be a total cost of our Chromebook fleet of one point three six million. On a three-year replacement cycle, that gives us eleven hundred and thirty-three Chromebooks per year at that four hundred and fifty-three thousand per year cost. And so with this plan, as Chromebooks are replaced, the old machines would go to the elementary schools and be put on carts. A Chromebook life, in a best-case scenario, is in the four-year range. In a carted environment or plugged in in a classroom in centers, you can get maybe five out of them at the absolute best. I, I really like to try to push for a three-year refresh for a number of reasons. Number one, it gives us the option in a bad budget year to punt and not replace if we need to. And we're not forced in that scenario. And also, if we go with a three-year replacement, we'll always have an excess of devices for other needs. So since we've, we've had, since we've started, or we've had as many devices as we've had throughout the COVID time, we've given Chromebooks out to a number of other uses that are not student one-to-ones of people who needed devices. And it's a lot cheaper of an option than trying to buy each of those people laptops in the moment and much faster if we have things on hand. So if we look at one-to-one Chromebooks for grades K through twelve on a three-year refresh, costs are the same. Ultimately, we're looking at seven thousand Chromebooks for the full district and a full Chromebook fleet cost of around two point eight million. With a three-year replacement cycle, twenty-five hundred Chromebooks per year at a cost of right around a million dollars. And that's a recurring cost. The, the cost of, of a one-to-one is, is very high. And it's something, it, it really comes down to the investment in what we want school to look like. And on the next slide here, you'll see I've kind of broken it down. Four different options, doing a three-year refresh and a four-year refresh, grades K through twelve as well as seven through twelve. And then the, on the far right, you'll see the sort of yearly cost of ownership for each of those options. And so I think we have a lot of flexibility here. I know that the, the curriculum and instruction department has a lot of things to, to kind of say along this route. But this would, this could include the, the tablets at grades K and one as well. It might be slightly cheaper, but for the most part, this is a pretty, pretty accurate cost at this time. And then there's a handful of additional costs when it comes to a one-to-one. One thing we'd like to do, we want to do this inventory every year so that we collect back every device that we hand out so that we know what we have. I think it's really important, we have a fairly transient district here, and I really want to make sure that we can keep track of our devices. And so that's, that's been the real push, part of this is the inventory management. And then also making sure that we have a yearly cadence where we have, we touch every device, we know where it is. Summer refresh also includes updating all of the software and all, all of the Chromebooks, making sure that they're ready to go for the start of the next school year. And then also, the other piece with that is that we get this, our vendor partner would store them offsite through that entire time. So they'd be kept in a warehouse, they're kept safe, and they get returned in the fall, charged and ready to go and handed out. That way, we don't have that two-month time period where we don't even have contact with students or our devices. Really just kind of helps keep things a little more controlled. And then every year, kind of planning for a lost charger purchase of around fourteen thousand. And then there's a device agreement, which we'll also be discussing in a, a future business affairs meeting to look at the fee schedule and agreement that we have with it. So that's all I have prepared for you tonight. If you have any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I just have, with the list of software that is there, is there any redundancy in, because that's a lot of different software? Are there packages where maybe we're not using everything and we can kind of cut down? I know that's not a huge part of your budget, but it just seemed like an awful lot of the same terms you being used, even-
Sure.
Like-
Yeah, unfortunately, they are all different things and there isn't redundancy currently built in. We're moving toward, with the push to move things into the cloud, we will be able to get rid of some of those costs. So some of the UPS costs are on servers that will be hopefully migrating out. So I'm hopeful that, once we can make that migration, we can get away from some of these things. But in the short term, we've kind of got to have overlap of our old systems till we move to the new systems and then can discontinue the old.
So yeah, real quick on that same line of thinking. So the software list was kind of like a sausage recipe to me, where it's like, it all tastes great, ma'am, but I really didn't know what's in it. I appreciate what you do and I, I thank you for putting that all together. But can you show us a year-over-year comparison? So it takes out the redundancy, right? So when I look at that and I look at the numbers associated with it, I don't know what's, you know, what's typical. So if there were changes, and then you talked about your considerations being supply chain, inflation and reactionary. Could you highlight which one of those items may be? If there's a change in the, in that dollar value associated with the budget item, is it because of inflation? Is it because, so there's no delta to compare to year over year? So I wouldn't know if there was something that changed or not. That's one thing. And then if you take that recommended additional item list, could you prioritize based on your expertise? And then what may be impacted by inflation, what may be able to be prolonged because of supply chain issues? And maybe even what may be customer-facing and a priority to the customer? You understand what I'm asking for?
Yep.
So that kind of helps us, right? So there's some great additional recommendations on there and I have my thoughts. But I, I don't know what the impact is as far as cost, if there's something that might be worth kicking down the road just based on where it is with the inflation and supply chain being lead times for things. So it might not make sense right now, but it could make sense next year. So is it, you understand what I'm asking for?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks.
Priority to customer, can that be, the customer be the curriculum and instruction or the students? Because I, no offense to all the teachers out there, but there's a lot of nice-to-haves, but not necessarily we-needs in this list, because-
I'm going to warn you, they're going to make a case for some of those things.
Are there any other options besides Chromebooks?
There are. Everything else is more expensive. So we, you, you can look at, at PC laptops, I mean, we could even look at MacBooks for students, but the cost just explodes. Pretty much any other device is more expensive.
And if I could add a little bit of, I guess, context and perspective, some along the lines of what I think you queried about, Mr. Pettijohn. In seventeen eighteen, we began our one-to-one initiative with two grades in middle school. We scaled it the next year. We added seventh, tenth, and we had enough Chromebooks to add eleventh. And in nineteen, in 2020, we know what happened, right? So I, I want to thank Nick and thank you all for your input consideration tonight and continued input related to some additional information we'll provide for you.
Thank you, Nick. Up next is our teaching and learning team.
Good evening, board members, and thanks for the opportunity. I like to call the teaching and learning team the smallest in the district, but the mightiest team. And we saved you money this year. I like to say that we went with the John Steffi School of Accounting. So we actually have money saved here for you.
Kathy, when your budget goes from one-
You're going to see why.
Up, that's not a reduction, that's an increase.
I took something out of your playbook. The master has succeeded. Okay, well, welcome, everyone. And to my left, I have the teaching and learning team, which it's a pleasure. We are newly called the teaching and learning team. We've always been the curriculum and instruction team. And curriculum just sounds so small, but we're the inner workings of what I think the district, what we're here for. And that is the students in this district. So we do have our little mission statement, and it aligns itself with the mission of the district. But we are here to meet the individual needs of students. So we cover all curriculum. We cover curriculum materials and resource materials for every student in this district, whether you're in our EL program, our special ed programs, our general ed programs, or our gifted programs. We touch pretty much every student, not in a literal sense. Okay, so if you look at this next page, and John, listen carefully. Our budget is one point four million dollars this year. And so John was thinking, oh, my gosh, Mrs. Leon, that's fifty percent more. However, a couple of things happened. We were asked to absorb the instructional software. So two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of that money is now in our budget. And I think it was a good strategy for Mr. Steffi to say that. So what we did, and Mr. Pettijohn, you seem like an intentioned detail person, so I'm going to have to provide you with some documents afterward that I don't have on this because I thought it was a general presentation. But what we decided to do was make a list in conjunction with the IT department of every piece of software that students use. So forget all those other things, because I never even heard of them, but I'm sure they're important to running the district. To us, this is the, where the rubber meets the road. So what we did was we broke it out into what is elementary software, what do our middle and high school use, and then what collectively is used. And what we did, Mrs., to Mrs. Nicholas's point, I've been around her so long that I knew she would say, are you looking at the software, is it being used, how many kids are using it? And is something that we really need? So the list that I will give you as the backup, that's not on our presentation, is the list that now remains. So with that in mind, there's not repeats on there. So you back out that money out of that one point four million. The next thing that happened was the last three years, the curriculum budget did not accurately reflect the curriculum renewal cycle. We have a curriculum renewal cycle that was ten years old. Mr. Burdenek, one of our previous directors of business operations, encouraged the curriculum and instruction department to look a ten-year out and start getting content-level programs on some type of cycle to know how you could budget out in future years. So it wasn't like social studies is going to come up every other year, it's going to come up five to seven years, and your content, and so on. So for the last three years in your curriculum budget, there were three key drivers that were not represented. And that was your K to six mathematics, your three to five science, and your K to six social studies. Those resources were on hold for close to three years. And that, that makes up six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this budget that was not budgeted in the last three years, that would have been purchased had we stayed on the curriculum renewal cycle. So when you break out the fact that last year's budget was seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, this year's actual budget of the remaining things comes to five hundred and thirty-three thousand. So our budget is really two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less. Mr. Steffi. Do you like that? Have I listened to you these last few years? So, all kidding aside, COVID, as Dr. Lee has often stood here and said to you, has severely impacted. And we want to get back to normal, and that's what this is. So just keep in mind, when you see that it's that high, we have absorbed all of the software technology. And we are now making purchases to make our curriculum whole and viable. And in the summer, the district got together, the district administration team and some teachers, and you had a retreat where you said you're going to provide a viable curriculum so that every student's needs are met. So we do need to go back to those three years where we didn't purchase those things, and we do need to make it whole. If you could go to the key program investments, who's running this, I'm not sure?
You mean Nick didn't hand over the, the push button?
No. That feels like too much control to me right now.
Coming from you?
I know. This is the gentler, Kathy. So your key program investments, you're making me laugh, I can't even look at you. So these are the three things I'm talking about. We would have seriously been ready to purchase those things because Doug and Kate were running pilots in these various things. And these are things that three years, two years, and last year, we would have gone ahead if we followed the curriculum renewal cycle. And these are things that must move ahead. So one thing we did do, the K to six social studies also should move ahead. But to not be a burden, too much of a burden on the budget, we're got, we asked that company for a one-year extension. So even though it was a six-year program that we purchased, we have a smaller price of one hundred and fifty-one thousand to get us through another year of district social studies. So in the next few slides, I'm going to have the experts themselves. I have Kate Henshaw, who oversees-
Kathy, can I stop you for a second? Five hundred and fifty-one thousand, is that just a Band-Aid or is that what is needed to get us through?
Okay, that's a good question. It's, it's to get us through one more year. Because when you look at the pilot materials and purchase- It's to get us through one more year, because when you look at pilot materials and purchasing, not a new curriculum, but updated resources to meet the standards, you're looking at about $300,000 to $500,000. So that's to get us through the same product for one more year. And that was, we did ask the social studies curriculum coordinators, in addition to my team, is this a program that still meets the needs and addresses the standards? And it does. It's also a program that we may continue with, but for now, in order to, for this program to still be supported next year, we're gonna have to pay, or we would have had to move ahead to the full adoption of the next series.
So essentially, that $151,000 is because we're still reviewing what we're using now, at the potential that it might be extended, or we might make a shift?
We, now, we're moving with the same program for next school year, for consistency purposes, because...
No, I mean after this $151 is done.
Yes.
That's why it's only one year, because we're gonna go through this year.
Yes, Mr. Price.
The coming year, but we're looking at the potential that, is it still gonna be in existence, or are we making a shift after this one year?
As of this time, the curriculum renewal cycle is up, that program is done, but there seems to be a lot of people who still like it and thinks, think it meets their needs. But we don't just look at it that way. We'll run a couple pilots of different programs for free, and then make a decision from there. But in the meantime, we still need to proceed with the curriculum materials. It's a good question.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, Kate, so you're gonna come up and talk a little bit about my view of my perspectives.
So I didn't want to leave my view of my perspectives off. We're not, this is not in the budget, but you guys approved this in January, so thank you, and we are moving ahead with that. So I wanted everyone to see what K-8 will be getting for curriculum resources this year. For ELA 9-12, it's simple resources, updates, and additions, and that includes continuation with my perspectives for 9-12 for certain teachers who are piloting it and using it, in additions to book clubs and class novels for our curriculum updates. And so the next thing is our ELD K-12 program. You'll see program materials replenishment, and they're not changing their program, they just need to repurchase student materials that go into the students' hands that go along with that program. And they're also asking for a PD cost of $1,000, because they are working to realign the 9-12 ELD, because it needs to be aligned to the 9-12 ELA core standards. For, if you don't know, our students who are levels 1 and 2, at the secondary level, get replacement English courses. And so it has to have the ELD standards and the ELA standards in it. So we're working to realign those courses. And then intervention 9-12 is continuing purchase for resources that the students use for math and reading intervention. So it's no change in programs, just supplies and additional resources.
So before Doug comes up, one thing I wanted to mention for newer board members and for the public, is that every November and every about April, so fall and spring, we do curriculum modifications. So the prices that Kate, Doug, and Brian are giving to you, I'll give you the backup. So what that looks like is, this is the teaching and learning team. From there, we have some teachers, a couple teachers on special assignment. We have Lauren Stefflick here, our federal programs interim coordinator, who's doing an excellent job. So then from there, you branch out to the schools and every content area. So if you're looking at social studies, math, science, English, language arts, if you're looking at the elementary level, they have what's called a curriculum coordinator, and that person oversees that area at the granular level in the field with the teachers. So what we do is we meet with, do we have about 24 of them? 24 curriculum coordinators? So 24 curriculum coordinators, in addition to all the principals, in addition to teachers, anybody can put in a modification to the curriculum. So when you see numbers broken out, like updated resources or additional resources, I will send Mrs. Nicholas, and she's instructional affairs, this devil, because this is the devil in the detail. This is really all, like what Nick had, I didn't know if we were going that granular, but I'm happy to give this to you, Mrs. Nicholas. So every subject level reports out at this big forum and tells us what they need, what isn't working, what is working. We look at this curriculum renewal cycle, we go to our vendors and ask for updated prices. So sometimes the numbers that are budgeted change ever so slightly in the spring when we actually get the official quote. We then say to the curriculum coordinators, it's not unheard of, curriculum coordinators, principals, and administration bring up a lot that they want. And we stop, like, in the flow, and we say, okay, these are, these are great, and someday we'd like to get all these, but what do we need to get us through? So I'll give you that backup document of these things that they're saying to break out the $60,000 or the $12,000. I have a list of the detail. But that's how we come about these prices. We have a, I know you had your equity report from four points last year, and we were commended on our curriculum renewal process and our curriculum modification process that has been in place in the district for close to 12 years, now, I think, Maribel Camps's time. It's an excellent therapeutic process to go through and examine everything you have, see if it's still needed, look at the current standards, look at what's new with technology and how things can be supported. So there are rationale for each one of these numbers. But I wanted Doug to talk a little bit about where we are with math in terms of curriculum renewal.
Hold on, Doug. Hey, Kathy. Just to kind of clarify a couple, like, one item, and it's not a lot, but since the district already provides PD, can you explain what the other PD cost for that little dollar amount is, since we already do them?
So it's just broke, it's broken out here, that comes along with the programming. So if you're looking at my perspectives, the program we recently purchased, they break out a professional development price, but some of these things are not, they're budgeted in teaching and learning, but they make their way to the Title II A section of the budget, sometimes, professional development. Some we have to buy, we develop our teachers, and we have a Title II A budget that you'll hear about later, of how we professionally development, all stakeholders, your administration, your teachers, your custodians, your PCAs. But with some of the programs, there's additional professional development related. So for instance, we purchased Linkit this year, so we had additional professional development, MyView, and the math products that were, resources that were aligning to our curriculum, that involves some professional development. So that's where those costs come from. And they get that, the curriculum coordinator gets that specifically from the vendor of what is the cost of professional development, what's the cost of the resource, and usually they give us a five to seven year. So some of this is curriculum, teaching and learning absorbed, Mr. Price. Most of it is absorbed in the Title II A professional development budget.
Oh, good, thanks.
Doug, you wanna talk about math?
Hi, everybody, how are you? For math, for K-8, you see $60,000 and change for resource, resource updates and additions. $45,000 of that is a program called Imagine Math. This is the third year of our three-year contract with Imagine Math. It's the same price every year. That's used in math in grades K through 8 as a differentiation tool. It's very widely used. If anybody would like to see the usage statistics on it, it's certainly something I like to gloat about for how successful we have been with that product. The other $15,000 of that is about $357 per grade level, per school, that teachers will have to purchase activities for their math workshops. Math workshop is our, is our method of instruction for elementary math. Our elementary math classes are about 70 to 75 minutes long, and it's not just 75 minutes of teacher lecture and drill-and-kill math problems, it's actually a series of smaller activities that involve a rotation-type setup. So teachers need resources, games that make math a little bit more fun and exciting, so they'll have a little bit of spending power this year for that. So that's the entire 60 grand. At the high school level, you see $12,000. That is some refreshes for some interactive calculators that our teachers use to demonstrate for our students, both from the graphing calculator side and the scientific side. And then also $10,000 of that $12,000 is an update for our AP Statistics course, which we haven't had for very long, but the enrollment in that class has been going up over the past few years, so we're due for some new textbooks for that area.
Next slide, please.
Over to science. For middle school, we purchased a new program last year. It's called Elevate Science. It comes from a company called Savis. This is year two of three for those payments, so you'll see that exact same number next year as well. That also includes, at the high school level, we are refreshing some of our microscopes, and that can eat up quite a bit of that $10,000. And we're also asking for a subscription for our anatomy and physiology class called Animatage. You can look it up, animatage.com. It's basically, basically dissecting a human being through your computer. And we're not exactly allowed to do that in person in schools. I don't know why, but it gives us an, as close as you can possibly get to the real thing, but through, through your laptop.
So one more time, Doug, for the peanut gallery. What, was that again?
Animatage. I can, it's pretty phonetic, A-N-A-ma-ta-g, M-O-T-A-G. It's a real neat product. Go ahead. And I'll turn it over back to Kate for social studies.
Okay, so you'll see me one more time after this, too. So social studies, Kathy talked about the continuation of the K-6 program, because we're at our sixth year. So we're gonna continue that program into this year and can either go with it for another six years or change after the pilot. For the 7-8 social studies, you can see a small number here, they're just looking to add to breakout EDU, which they've been using for the last two years, so that's more experiential learning, so the kids are going in and doing activities and researching on their own. For the 9-12 social studies, resources, updates, and additions, they're looking to add DBQs and some additional primary source, resources to the secondary courses there, and as well as the PD cost you're gonna see here is for curriculum writing. So, Mr. Price, to talk about your last piece of the PD writing, sometimes we have teachers come on board to do curriculum writing with us, and then they get paid a PD cost. So that's why you see some additional PD costs stuck in here. And then social studies, K-12, that's for the Nuzella resource, which is a digital resource that provides students with real-time current event resources that can be leveled, so students aren't all reading the same level resource, so it could be the same topic, but it's broken out by different levels. So if a student's reading at a high level, they can read one article on this topic. If they're reading at a lower level, they can read on their level, so they still have access to the content. And then I think I'm turning over to Brian and coming back.
Good evening. So in grades K through 12, the technology program continues to grow well beyond the traditional keyboard, mouse, and computer setup. With the purchase of Makerspace and First Lego Robotics Resources, elementary students will have the access to opportunities to learn about science and engineering concepts through experimentation and grow their understanding through the design and engineering process. In grade 7 through 12, we include resources for student opportunities such as STEM guitar, additional cameras for the digital photo design courses, bringing our total to nine cameras from, from what we currently have at Ben Salem High School. At the middle level, we plan to improve the student-to-robotic kit ratio with the purchase of additional robot kits, robot builder kits. At Ben Salem High School, we continue to add additional instructional resources for the family consumer science programming. We plan to purchase online and print material for student use in both Child Development 1 and the Child Development 2 courses.
And then staying on this same slide, physical education, you see $1,500 for program enhancements. That's a new unit that they are looking to add to the curriculum at Ben Salem High School for table tennis. And then the biggest number you see on here is K-12 music. A little quiz for everybody. Can anyone tell me the, the only classroom at Ben Salem High School that is used all eight periods a day, and for all eight periods, has maxed-out classrooms? The answer is the piano lab at Ben Salem High School. Yeah. So if you can imagine, the piano lab is used literally from bell to bell, and it is used every single seat, every single period. That takes a little bit of wear and tear on that room. We've had the piano lab for about five or six years now without any real influx of new equipment, so this is replacing the teacher station, which is essentially a teacher's desk with a piano built into it, and also some of the student centers as well. There's also, there's also costs included in there for our elementary musicians for some composition software.
I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Kristin Egan. She's been coming to the board meetings this year. She will be the chief negotiator for the BTA contract, so we, we're very friendly with her. Okay. So I do want to make a plug and plea. So a few things we're gonna do, Mrs. Nicholas, the reason I'm looking at you is for the benefit of the public, because these budget meetings have to progress the way they do. At the next Instructional Affairs meeting, Mr. Patel and Mrs. Snyder, she's not here, but we're gonna go through each of the curriculum modifications to tell you more about these particular choices that we made. We're also gonna go through all of the software used across all three levels, so that you can also have, and then from there, the notes will go to the board, or board members are welcome to come. And we welcome the public to come to these Instructional Affairs committee meetings, because these are where decisions are made in tandem with the board, the teachers, and the administration. The reason you saw the three team members from teaching and learning talk about different things is because, as I said, each one of these areas has a curriculum coordinator who gets paid a stipend using our Title II money? So we don't, we don't absorb it, per se, but we use the professional development pot of money in Title II A to pay them a small stipend for what they do. And then from there, those 22 or 23 curriculum coordinators, some of them report respectively to the three teaching and learning supervisors. One of the things I wanted to talk about briefly, if I may, is the one-to-one initiative, which I feel has been, are you allowed to say the word bastardized? I don't want to say that because of the Oscars last night, for God's sake, I will not come up and hit you, Mr. Price. Because there was no repercussions with Mr. Smith, so I'm, I'm not sure where to go with that. So what I wanted to say is, we meet every Tuesday in administrative meetings, and that's your cabinet members, and your teaching and learning team, and Lauren, and sometimes Bethany, and so we are cohesive unit. And in order for us to be successful, we do rely on a one-to-one program. Before the last board, the makeup of the last board, so I'm going back, I guess, Mrs. Nicholas, like, maybe five years ago, and as Dr. Lee alluded to, we were well on our way to a one-to-one initiative, because it was the board's desire and the administration's desire at that time to have a one-to-one initiative. You can just tell from the language of some of these software programs and the things that we're, we are preparing students for their workforce, not ours. And although we may not be comfortable with the use of Chromebooks, as some board members in the last board were not that comfortable with it, it is something we rely on heavily. We can't get to kids every single day, but you can rest assured that the programs that we're supporting, especially in that MyView, a student can go home and use the software on that and try to get caught up. They don't have to go to all these random websites anymore, like most districts used to have to do. We have programs that have great resources in them. They also have things for the teachers to help differentiate that student who already knows this material and needs to go on further. So we're a little bit disappointed, obviously COVID just put, it was like a train going off the tracks with our K, our one-to-one initiative. So I am a little bit disheartened to find out that next year, our first through sixth graders will be using Chromebook devices that are four-plus years. The danger in that is that some of them may no longer be supported. So we've had a lot of efficiencies with the one-to-one initiative, and one example I'll give you is our PSSA testing, our Keystone testing, our ESL, EL testing. We do all that online, all in one shot. If we have to go back to using Chromebooks, carts, so for instance, if there's four sections of grade one at Valley, and we have a cart that has to go in one room, and then a cart that has to go in another room, you're using, you're losing significant instructional time. And this is not because I, I believe in it, it's because it's, it's what we need to do. We were on our way to be there. Through no fault of the IT department, who I want to commend, in 2020, I was the only department physically in every single day distributing Chromebooks to parents with gloves as the cars went by. I can't say enough that maybe the numbers didn't all jive, or we didn't know where every single machine went, per se, but that's where Mr. Camerano comes in, and he has been, he has been doing a great job looking at every single device we have. What do we need to make this a viable K-12 one-to-one initiative? So you do have some important decisions to make, and I'd like to entertain these in Instructional Affairs, but... instructional affairs, but I, I hope we don't have to go through next year with four-year-old devices for the one through six students. It will be a hardship and it's just something I don't think would be best. But I know you have a lot of important decisions and every budget cost center manager is going to plead their case as to why they need money. But that's my plug for that and I want to thank Nick for his relentless advocacy for that because it is, it really is important. I thank you for your time. Please know that we're available to you. If you go through Mrs. Nicholas, she will send me an email. I will get the backup detail because I, you really put us on the spot with all that detail you had. We have it. I just wasn't sure if you wanted all of that tonight. And we'll step up in instructional affairs to go over this again. And we, we would love to see all of you at instructional affairs and we would love to entertain any questions you have about the detail. Thank you so much.
Thanks Kathy. All, all that on the spot and she still gave you a glowing review, Nick. How about that?
He's getting me lunch tomorrow at Kelly's.
Hey Doug, when, when we're done, if you're still here, I got some questions for you or I'll send you some stuff.
While we're in transition, I'd like to thank the teaching and learning team for their presentation and their work. I, yeah, thanks for, for the reminder. Yeah, and I, I also want to say that they, along with all of our other colleagues, not only managed, maintained and provided for our kids during COVID. You can see that they've been incredibly progressive related to future forward thinking and initiatives. And, and, and that's so important to our kids and community. So, it wasn't just money or finance that kept us from advocating for these things or increased Mrs. Leon's budget significantly this year. It, it, it was, it was timing. It was timing. It would not have been proper, appropriate or timely to move some of this stuff in the middle of a pandemic.
Well, Dr. Lee, technically, if you go by Kathy's math, she saved us money and it's actually just a barely reduction.
You, you, you notice I didn't refer to that metric, but.
Just remember, teaching and learning saved you money.
And I also want to share before we, we move forward and thanks for your patience, Mr. Cohen, I know you're up next, that Mrs. Snyder and Mrs. Rivera are representing us tonight at the Bucks County Technical High School Board Meeting, hence their, their absence tonight.
I just wanted to point out that even if the budget did go up, depending on whose version you're, you're going with, it is a very, very small part of our budget and that is the reason why we're here, so.
Indeed.
Yep.
And I want to personally thank you for the new guy tutorial. That really helped me understand the backbones of all that. So, thanks so much.
No, no.
Okay, up next is Mr. Cohen. He is the budget manager for our largest cost center and that's our special ed pupil services department. Mr. Cohen?
Great, thank you. So, thank you, board, and good evening. So, what I'm going to start out with is a brief overview of just special education and the different departments that are kind of under special services, all right? So, just think of special services as everything beyond IT and curriculum, right? So, all the special education departments, school psychologists, social workers, school counselors, any type of outside counseling component that we make contract with, nursing services, home and school visitors, all of that, anything outside the realm that kind of helps kiddos be able to focus when they're in school is kind of under the special services department, all right? So, I do my budget a little differently, the presentation at least, and pretty much go by functions and whatnot. I'm not going to read every function line. You have the presentation in front of you to review, but I'll kind of go through it. And if you guys have questions or any comments or concerns when we do this, just, just feel free to, to ask. It's not interruption or anything. So, special education, we've got about 1,427 students in the entire school district that have some kind of diagnosed disability, right? And so, that disability can be anywhere from a student with a speech-only impairment who requires very little services and maybe 30 minutes of speech services a week, all the way up to a significantly impaired student with a traumatic brain injury who needs OT, PT, private duty nursing, curb-to-curb transportation, right? So, so my, my budget for students can, can really span a very large gamut. And everything that I do for special education students falls under the law. It's called IDEA, which is the Individual Disabilities Education Act. And so.
Hey Brian, one second.
Yeah, sure.
That 1427 students, does that include only the ones in Ben Salem or the ones that are at our charter schools and other places that we're responsible for?
It is just the Ben Salem students, correct.
So, there are additional students at other charter schools that were still responsible for their cost?
No, the only, the only kiddos, excuse me? There, there are, that is correct, yes. That is true, correct.
That's not including this 1427?
Uh, no, that is correct. He, he does that piece, yep.
Just make that clear.
Yep, yep. So, it is about 22% of our school district population. It has ranged anywhere from 20% to 23% and it fluctuates with the overall population of the district. Our number has gradually continued to increase over the years. And it has started to plateau, but, but it, it's shifting in that we're, we're getting more and more students with significant disabilities and less students with minor disabilities. So, your learning support kiddo, some of those types of services that don't require a, a large amount of services, those numbers are kind of either going down or plateauing. And the students that are diagnosed with maybe an autism impairment or traumatic brain injury, those students are coming into us and gradually increasing in enrollment, all right? Which has a pretty significant impact to a budget, all right? So, we receive about $1,400,000 a year in IDEA funding in, in Ben Salem School District. So, that's the law that you hear spoken about where they say, is the federal government fully funding IDEA? And that's the piece where they're really, clearly they're not, right? We, we spend a lot more than $1,400,000 on special education students. So, that's that huge gap right there. So, in addition to students that have IEPs, there are also some regular education students and programs that are funded under my budget as well. So, this 1,100 budget is a regular programs line. And any general education students or students that do not have an IEP that I need to cover the funding for if they're in another LEA. So, they could be incarcerated somewhere and they are at the youth detention center and they're required to go attend school. We're going to be billed for some of those students. So, that, that covers that line.
Hey Brian, those acronyms aren't previously identified prior. Can you just say what they are as you go? Cause you have some that are previously identified above the slide.
Sure, sure.
Then you have some coming down. I know we operate in acronyms in, in education, but the public normally doesn't. So, if we could just tighten that up.
So, LEA is a local educational agency and that's the public school district. That's us, Ben Salem, we're the LEA. A PRRI, where it says a tuition payment to PRRI, that's a private residential rehab institute and there, there are placements that are made by outside agencies for students in some of those programs. And we don't have really a say in if a student gets placed in a program like that or not. We'll just get a bill at some point for, for that particular program. The next slide is where it starts to get into all of my special education function codes. And the first one is life skills. And so, this covers all of my students kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade that receive any type of life skills support programming. And some of this could be some transportation costs, mostly supplies, books, and if I need some, some equipment costs will come out of that. The next, but, the, the next code is the emotional support code. And again, this is all goes from K to 12 and it's any students that receive services in an emotional support type program. And same concepts here, supplies, books, any type of equipment that are needed. The next code is autistic support, same thing, K to 12, any students that I need to fund in an autistic support type program. So, obviously you can see I have my teachers delineated if you're a life skills teacher, if you're an autistic support teacher, if you're an emotional support teacher. And so, all of those operate under different, different function codes. The next one is learning support and you can see that, that is one of the more costlier codes. And that's because it has a large population of students, the largest population of special education students in the district is going to be a learning support type student. And again, it covers supplies, books, any type of equipment I may need to purchase. The next code is your gifted support code. And again, it's K through 12th grade and any type of supplies, books, any type of equipment that may be needed under that particular function code. The special programs code, which is the, at 1290 or 130 or 131. So, any type of extended school year program that, that I use for students, students that have an IEP that are qualified for extended school year, it's a five-week program. It runs in July and usually the first week of August. You may see buses and whatnot running around township in the summer. They are eligible for school during the summer and those services are paid out of that. That is the majority of our teachers teaching those programs, but there's also some IU programs that run that I have kids in that, that, that will fund out of another code. There's also tutoring services in there and extra contract salary if I need for staff. The next one is the 322 code and that is by far the, the most costly. That is your IU code. So, any services that we contract with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for come out of this code. So, basically, these are services we contract with them. You're basically buying seats, if you will, for students. So, we, we run almost every program there is except very, very cognitively impaired autistic students, which they call autistic level three. It's almost like ABA type services. It's a one-to-one type program. So, for every student you have in the class, you're probably going to have another adult in the room with them. So, there could be five students in the room and six adults, one teacher, and then five, five personal care assistants or instructional assistants to support those kids. So, those are very costly. And it, it, it's a service that we don't, we don't provide at this time. They also run our multiple disability support class programs. They also run a brain steps program. We have one at the Bucks, I'm sorry, at Ben Salem High School. We have a couple of programs here with us. We're looking to bring back an MDS class that the IU runs. But those services can, can be quite costly. There's also your early intervention students that are in there. So, if you're a student in preschool and you receive early intervention services, you can defer a year of early intervention and come to us a year later than, than what a normal kindergarten student does. The tricky part about that is they don't have to tell us that they're doing it and so we don't always know. So, sometimes I'm attempting to budget for something I don't know may occur or not. I'm not aware of how many students receive early intervention services all the time in Ben Salem unless the parent wants us to be notified of that. So, some of this is kind of looking back at previous years. COVID didn't necessarily help with that to kind of see where we are and kind of gauge an estimate of who I think is going to come and who I think is going to kind of stay back. Most of those times, there are students that may be at like Easter Seals and the parent feels more comfortable staying at Easter Seals as opposed to come in the U.S. for kindergarten. The next line is professional services. So, that's any types of tuition costs that I have for students that are in some type of alternative education program outside of the district. The next one, the 324s through 550s are my ongoing professional development. So, we have, we have special ed teachers that need to be CPI certified in case they need to restrain a student, right? We have student, teachers that are Wilson certified, which is a highly specialized type of reading program. There's ongoing professional development that's required from that, that we can't do in district that I need to send the staff out for. So, so that this, this covers some of that. There are some technical services costs in here. My scanning services costs come out of here. We have special ed files scanned every year. They send them out, they scan them and they send it back on a thumb drive, which took up like the entire size of a, you know, a room. And we keep those because we're required by law to maintain some of those records. There's also some printing and binding in there, but that is almost gone at this point, obsolete. The next code is tuition to other LEAs in the state. And so, this is any special education students that could possibly be incarcerated or if they are in some type of residential treatment facility. This, um, the, these types of codes kind of dropped off during COVID because students weren't being moved around and weren't being placed in other programs. They're starting to kind of uptick a little bit because COVID is kind of going away, if you will, and people are starting to move kids around. The issue is finding space in a facility at this point is very, very difficult. The, the next code I have is tuition to my non-public schools. And so, any, any particular licensed private academic school that we may refer a student out to could be here or any type of alternative ed program, whether the student has an IEP or not. So, if we have a student at, at the high school that may be possibly expelled from the school and we need to educate them somewhere, this could possibly be a piece of where I need to kind of draw some of that funding for. The next code is tuition for approved private schools. And so, these are specifically certificated programs that students with some types of behavioral issues may possibly attend. The APS schools provide a 40-10 slot with some of the programs. So, there'll be a split between the state and the district. So, it'll be a kind of a 60-40 split, if you will. The next code is any type of local seminar travel or institutionalized students with the IU. Any type of reimbursement if I were to send staff offsite to a seminar or whatnot and there's going to be some travel or whatnot for mileage, that's kind of covered under there. The next one is going to be supplies, licenses, fees and books, any type of general office supplies. The majority of the, the funding in here is spent on psych protocols. So, in order to test a student to be, to see if they're eligible for special education, there's an evaluation process that happens. The school psych needs to be able to do some type of measures with the student. Those measures, we have to purchase those from usually Pearson. And so, there's a fee for that and they, they can be quite costly. If I need some license fees, for AmesWeb is the system we use to kind of track progress monitoring and whatnot. So, that, that's kind of baked into that as well. Another code that I have is basically my equipment. If there's any type of technology hardware or classroom furniture I may need, I could have a student move in and I need some type of highly specialized piece of equipment for a student to be in the classroom or whatnot. So, I need to budget, I need to budget for some of that. The next one is just dues and memberships. And so, the Act, the Act 93 agreement allows for some administrators to become members of council, for exceptional children or PA Association for public school administrators. And so, that's where I have, I draw those from. The next one, 1430 is for homebound students. And that's basically if a student is homebound for whatever reason and we need to provide homebound instruction for them, this is where I would pay some of the services out of that. The next one, the 1441, again, is, is general education students that may be incarcerated youth. There's years where very little of these funds are touched and there's years where almost all the funding is touched. It just depends. We don't, we don't really have an option for, for some of those parts. Technical services, travel and supplies, the next code, those are specifically for student services. So, you may see some repetitiveness here, whereas you, you thought, oh, I already saw like scanning processes or I already saw mileage reimbursement. Those were for special education matters. This is for student services. It's, it's a different, it's a different function code. Some, some of the same concepts though, dues and fees and whatnot. Scanning for graduation files. We don't have exceptional storage facilities in the district. And so, we have quite a lot of files and we've been scanning those documents and being able to retrieve them much, much easier. The next code, my 2120 is for guidance services and it's supplies, travel, books and whatnot for basically for school counselors, guidance services. And there's some reimbursement in there, some books, some license fees for Naviance if I need. And really the one that was, it was kind of increasing, but it stopped with COVID. It might creep up again is we're required to provide transportation for students. If a student was a resident of Ben Salem and they end up in a foster placement for whatever reason. whatever reason, and the foster placement is in Pen Ridge, that student could stay in Ben Salem for the remainder of the year, possibly even beyond that. But we and Pen Ridge will be required to transport the student back and forth. And so that that can, the cost for that come out of that, out of that budget code. And the next line is for psych services and local travel. This again is for my school psychologists because they're Act 93, if they're going to join NASP or whatnot. But the majority of the funds for that comes out of an independent educational evaluation, the last line on there. And so if a parent of an IEP student, if I evaluate that student and they have issue with that evaluation or don't agree with it, they legally can request an outside independent evaluation and the district legally needs to pay for that evaluation. There are some parameters we can put in place for that, but but there's very little room the district has to deny that request for an evaluation. And so more and more that has been occurring. And so this is where, this is where I would draw those funds down from that. The next code is for my professional ed services and supplies. This is pupil ser, pupil services and social work. And this is the additional SAP counselors that we contracted for this school year and for the next school year. That's the majority of where that that money comes from, from that piece. And instructional staff development, the next code, the 2271 all the way through the 72s. This is for basically professional development if I need for support staff, instructional assistants, personal care assistants, and for some certificated staff if if necessary. The next budget is for the nursing department. And this is for any types of professional services, the mandated physicals, the dental screenings to pay for the dentist. The nursing equipment, if I need additional supplies in the nurse's office to calibrate the equipment, the fibrillators. The largest piece here, this code really, really increased higher than ever before is the agency nursing services we've had to contract with. So the Viata's and the Source for Nurses, because we were unable to find nursing services to work, to be employed by the district. So we we contracted it out. And so I'm anticipating we may run into some of the same issues with being able to staff that. And so I'm going to need to go outside to kind of staff some of those positions. That is, that is all I have. Anyone have any questions?
I got a quick question. Maybe it's my, my own understanding. So on slide 50, 12956104 has a budget of 225K for incarcerated youth academic portion. On slide 58, budget 144156104 has incarcerated youth academic portion in state for 20K. So it's the same narrative. What's, can you explain the difference?
Is, is one could be general education, one could be for special education services. Yeah. There's, there's a whole list of function codes and and that that I'm required to kind of plug specific things into. So when I get a bill for a student, I need to look and see, you know, does the student have an IEP? If they do, then that comes out of one particular code. If not, we're else Brett or I'll, I'll have an issue. Yep. Any other questions or anything? No?
And then if you could, sorry. If you could highlight anything that's got a significant delta. So any budget item that or a cost code that's gone up considerably.
Sure.
Could you highlight that and then maybe explain what it is, if it is inflation or, like the nurse thing is a great example, right? So we understand why that is what it is. But if there's anything else in, within the budget that kind of stands out from a, like a delta or variance? Could you call that out for us?
I can't, for mine, it's really that nursing piece, and I put a little asterisk next to that one. That, that for us, for my department is really the largest one. And, and the, um, the, um, the, we added the six, um, gosh, what's the name of that? The, through the council, the SAP counselors. So we added that for this year and for next year. So at this point, next year, we'll need to have, or before this point, we'll need to have additional conversations of is, is some of that going to continue or whatnot? But that is an uptick that you saw a spike, basically, I don't want to say COVID related, but it could be, right?
Another, not calendar year to calendar year, but historical delta was, and a positive one for us, I think, Mr. Cohen, is when we started our own in-house alternative program at the high school.
Sure.
In 2018.
Yep, absolutely.
We kept a lot of our kids here and.
Yeah, this, the, this board over the years has been really good about, we, we had many, many more students placed offsite or placed outside in IU programs. I mean, you can see just the increase in special education teachers and whatnot across the district that we've really added because it's, there reaches a point where you have so many kids that you're sending to a specific program that you're paying X for. And so once it reaches that threshold, it's, it's, it doesn't make any sense to me to do that. We can do it maybe for less money and keep the kids local as opposed to having to send them to another, another program, right? Because if I place a student in an IU program per se, it doesn't always mean it's going to be in Ben Salem. It may be in the Chaminie. It may be an IU program in Pensbury or Bristol Township, right? And so the board has been gracious about being able to add staff for us when I can find classroom space and keeping those kids in, in Ben Salem, in their, in their town.
So that 22% or 24% or whatever that number is for kids that fall within some category of special education, is that number typical with, as we rank against other districts in Bucks County? And if it's a little higher, is that because we're doing a better job of keeping the kids in Ben Salem?
Well, it is a little higher. The, the state average is about 16%. But there's also things where, you know, we're monitored every six year and the state kind of, you know, reviews all that documentation and whatnot, and they, and they in turn send it to feds. But we're, we're also higher for a diagnosis of students with autism, right? So I'll, I'll end up being cyclical monitored and have an improvement plan on that I'm over diagnosing students as autistic, which is clearly not the case. You know, we've got students that have, it isn't mild autism, it's significant levels of autism, right? And so, you know, they, they, they kind of beat you up on one side and say, well, you're doing this, you have too many, too many kids identified as X. And it's like, listen, I, we're not out there trying to find these kids to tag them as autistic for whatever reason you think it might be, right? They're, they're clearly here. Our location geographically, we get a lot of students who come from Philadelphia, who've had services from Philadelphia or in early intervention programs in Philadelphia, and they'll go there maybe K1. And they'll leave and do anything they can to, to get out of Philadelphia, to come out to the suburbs. Ben Salem is very attractive for some of those families. And so those are some, I think, the drivers of some of our numbers, right? Because I think we do do a really good job here of educating those kids.
The vast majority of our special learners are learning challenged, correct?
Correct. Learning support, that's correct. Yep. And those students, we educate, the majority of in their homeschools. We've just got programs in every building. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Ms. Lauren Steffle. Could I suggest that we just take a two or three minute break and?
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay, the next presentation is an overview of the usage of our ESER grants. Ms. Lauren Steffle, who is a teacher on special assignment, has been a Godsend this year. She's done a fantastic job as far as helping the district navigate through all of our different federal funds. For existing board members, this is something that's going to be new. This is new for everybody. The amount of funds that we've gotten, over $17 million in ESER funds, has come at a great time for our district. We want to go through on how we're utilizing them, how we're using them to offset some of our existing costs, some of the items that are one-time costs, and a lot of decisions that the board's going to have to make as far as some of the things that we've put into our budget to support our staff and students. Mr. Cohen alluded to one of them, the, the counselors that the board approved that is in there. And you'll see Lauren broke down our costs as recurring, non-recurring, and a question mark. And Lauren's going to go through how we spend all of our funds, how they're scheduled to be spent, and some of the decisions the board has to make. So Lauren, you're up.
Well, not only do they save the best for last, they save the section with the most questions.
Okay. But also I was figuring, I'm not asking for money. So that, you got to look at it that way. I'm not asking for any money.
Well, that's, that's a nice way to put it.
Yes. So, all right. Well, the first one is the overview of the ESER grants. Okay, so your ESER grants are the elementary, secondary schools, emergency relief funds. So these were given to, again, prevent, prepare for, recover from COVID. All right, so what you're going to see here, you see the 17 million that from all the different grants? The one grant that's not up here is the ESER one. That was almost 1.3 million that has been used already. So I want to show you what's going to affect our budget from now to the future. Okay? So we have our ESER two. Now, Mr. Cohen had alluded to the Bucks County IU services. A lot of this money is going to be going through to pay for those IU services. All right? And again, this is just an overview. I will go through each grant. I will go through what is recurring, as Mr. Steffi said, what is non-recurring and what is questionable that the, the board will need to make decisions on. Then what you have is your ARP ESER. That's the American Relief Plan. It's through an act that came through. Now, 20% of that grant has to be used for learning loss. So we have the 8.6 million, almost 8.7 million, which is your ESER three, which again, you're going to see is going to be used to, as Mr. Cohen alluded to, was talking about paying for the IU services. Then what we have is our learning loss. This is an including, this is going to include a lot of your technology. You're going to look at the different programs that we're talking about. You're going to look at ELD specialists. Again, I will be breaking this all down in future slides. I just got, I just wanted to do an overview right now. Then we have something called set aside grants. These set aside grants need to be used for specific purposes. So you have your ATSI set aside for Schaefer and for the high school. Mr. Camerano said, had alluded to these also, that we are using these to help with the technology budget. ATSI stands for additional targeted support and intervention. All right? So that these need to be used for specific purposes. Next one are your set asides. You have your after school and summer school. I did clarify with the state, your after school and summer school are used for anything that occurs after the school, after the school day is over or after the school year is over. So we are going to be, as you're going to see, using these for enrichment programs, summer enrichment programs. Then you have your 7% set aside for social emotional and social emotional professional development. Mr. Cohen again had suggested, had alluded to your SAP counselors, your student assistance program counselors that are in specific schools. This is what's going to be used to pay for the two years that we have. We are going to decide later on whether we are going to continue with the SAP counselor. We are going to decide later on whether we are going to continue with the SAP counselors. Your next one is going to be your reading improvement. The teaching and learning team had talked about a reading program through SAVUS, which is my view and my perspective. We're going to use the grant to pay for the professional development for this. Your next one is other learning loss. We're going to use this for a certain amount of tech purchases, such as things for the high school like Study Island. All right? Do you want to go to the next slide or...? Oh, thank you. All right, so your next one, we thought was really important, is to show you how much we're using for the grants per year. I like looking at it this way because then I can see where the money is budgeted, where it is going, and how we are using it. So when you look at your ESER two grant, we are using it for the 2122 school year, which is this year, and the 2223 school year. Again, these are going to be for your IU services. Now, your ESER two ends in 2023. That's why we're splitting that money up and using that until 2023.
Do we have an exact date in 2023 that it sunsets?
Yes, it's September 30th of 2023. Your ESER three, again, that can be used up to 2024. So we're splitting those IU services between 2223 and 2324. Now, your learning loss, your ESER three, that is this twenty percent set-aside that we had to put from our budget, that was about ten million dollars that was given for the ESER grant. Now, 2021, we had summer enrichment, so these are some of the items that went to summer enrichment. So that's why you see something in 2021. 2122, we are going to be looking at other expenses from our math program, professional development materials for that. We are looking at ELD specialists, which are English-language development specialists. We're also looking at a bilingual secretary there. The bilingual secretary starts around April 4th. All right, 2223, you're going to see about the same thing. Again, it goes up due to some of the requirements for the new math program. And then 2324, you're really just looking for your ELD specialists, which are going to be your salaries and benefits, and you are also going to look for your bilingual secretary, who again, will start April 4th. Your ARPESER 2.5 set-aside, Mr. Camerano had talked about it. It's fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. We're going to be using those for technology within Schaefer. That was approved at the last Business Affairs meeting. Your next one, your 2.5 ATSI set-aside for the high school, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Mr. Camerano had talked about this. We were going to use this to offset the one-to-one, hopefully, the one-to-one Chrome initiative, and this will be at the high school level. These grants, one of the grants has to be used at Schaefer. As you can see, the other grant has to be used at the high school. Then you have your set-aside for after-school. You have a set-aside for summer school. You will see about six thousand dollars for the 2021 school year. We use that for crossing guards to help our students safely cross the street from where they live to the summer school programs. Your social-emotional classroom, we are using those for your SAP, the SAP counselors that Mr. Cohen had discussed. And then you have social-emotional PD. I'm going to be talking more about this. This is your professional learning through Julia Skolnick. And I'll talk a little more about that when we get to the slides. And it is also part of your SAP counselors. So the SAP counselors are providing services to our students, and they're also supporting our staff during the SAP meetings. Then you have your reading improvement. Again, this is what we talked about, what Teaching and Learning had talked about. With the SAVUS program, then my view and my perspective, this is the professional development. And this is a one-year cost. We'll talk more about that. And then you have your set-aside for other learning loss, and we talked about this with some high school, with some technology at the high school. All right? All right, so your ESER two grant, this is what we had talked about. These are recurring costs. These are through IU services. So as you look, it's a lot. And the IU services, as Mr. Cohen had discussed, makes up a lot of the special ed budget. Okay, any questions on that? Yes, Mrs. Nicholas?
Since this is recurring, in two years, we're going to have to, I don't want to say come up with all this money, but we're going to have to account for it. Because right now, the IU's getting four point six million, but in two years, we're going to have to come up with that, two, yeah, two years. We're going to have to budget that back in, right?
Correct, in three years, yeah.
Three years, okay.
Because we're going to use ESER three. Because if you recall, last year, the board, we had discussed how we were going to use our ARPESER two and three funds, and we had talked about offsetting our special ed costs because IDEA was an allowable cost. So we broke that ESER two and ESER three into three equal payments for 2122, 2223, and 2324 school year. But you're correct, we're going to have to make that up. And that's what we've been discussing, and that's why we've had this broken down as far as what is recurring, what's non-recurring, and what you guys are going to have to make a decision on, on what you want to continue to include or you no longer want to include it.
So that's a four and a half million dollar wall we're going to hit.
It's a significant amount, yes.
Yes.
All right, so this is your ARPESER learning loss. We had talked about these. These are not recurring costs right now for 2021. We had to pay for some classroom, this was classroom supplies for summer enrichment, salaries and benefits for the teachers and staff who worked the summer program. And there was also a requirement for classroom snacks during that enrichment time. But these, again, are non-recurring. These are 2021 learning loss, so again, we split these up by year. I think it's really important to look at what we're doing each year. So your 2021, 2022, again, we had some classroom supplies. This also came from the summer enrichment program. The reason it's in 2122 is because the fiscal year ended, so we have to put it into the next year. So that's why you're not seeing that in 2021. Now, your ELD specialist, we've had an increase of students from different countries that do not speak English. We have the English-language development specialists. Now, we had put this as a yes/no. The reason we did it is I know Mr. Steffi had budgeted for it. We had then decided to put this in using the grant, and then we're hoping it will be reoccurring. Our numbers are going up significantly at all of our schools. So we're hoping that we'll be able to keep these ELD specialists and also to possibly get some additional ones.
And what the yes/no means is, basically, this is offsetting. If you recall, this was a big project of Ms. Fernandez. She wanted the ELDs. She wanted the bilingual secretary. The board had approved in the current year budget for those items. Now, we're using the federal funds, even though they are budgeted, and they are in next year's budget. So it's already allocated. So it's a recurring cost, but it's not a recurring cost, so that's why we labeled it yes/no. Any questions on that?
Just to get that, oh, I'm sorry. Just to get that straight. It's in the budget that we're reviewing right now. It was budgeted in the current budget. It's budgeted in the upcoming budget. We just used the ESER funds to offset it, so the funds that we budgeted are still available.
That's correct.
Yes, and these were discussed during Instructional Affairs in July, I think, of 2021. And then some of the school board meetings from the last meeting. And I know it was Mrs. Fernandez who brought it up.
And the only thing, it's not an ad, it's just, repeat. We have a significant increase in EL students this year. Doug? Any particular language that we saw an increase in our EL students? And by the way, this is going to be a topic for discussion at our next Instructional Affairs meeting as well. But I'll let Doug answer the question.
If you give me just one second, I'll pull the file up.
We know it was Spanish, and there's some additional languages.
We can keep going while Doug finds it. As soon as Doug finds it, he can just pop in there. We don't have to wait for Doug to put him on the spot.
All right, I wanted to make sure. All right, now, the next one, if you look at educational software. This was our Linkit, which is also our, it's going to be our new data dashboard. We have been getting a lot of professional development on this. We wanted one place where we could see all of the data. For the classroom teachers could see it, the administrators could see it, the cabinet could see it. So this is part of this. Now, Linkit will be a recurring cost. We were able to put it in for this part of the grant. The next one we also used was Sapphire Notification. I know Mr. Camerano had talked about it with that. But Sapphire Notification is, again, for parent engagement. It's a lot of times for administrators to reach out. We also have something called Talking Points, which is also a great parent engagement tool that we use to contact parents, teachers, administrators. But this paid for Sapphire Notification and also our Linkit.
And Sapphire Notification will eventually replace One Call.
And then what we tried to do with the 2122 is add, again, I know Mr. Camerano and Mrs. Leon had talked about the one-to-one Chrome initiative. We were looking with this grant, working very closely with both teams, to try to get as many, to go towards that goal, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. So we were, from this 2122, about forty-seven thousand dollars to use for this, which, again, will add up to what Mr. Camerano said about the six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars from the ARPESER grant. Now, the 2223, this is your additional learning loss still. We're using that still, the probably two million. Now, the first one, if you look at it, you see math program. We are looking at a math program in the middle schools. This is going to help pay for your professional development. I know there was a question about that with professional development, so this will be professional development. Also, some classroom online resources. In addition to that professional development, we do have to pay the teachers because it'll be most likely after hours, so this is their workshop rate. We also, again, put in, we were able to work in more educational technology, which would be your Chromebooks, hoping to push, again, towards that one-to-one Chromebook initiative. You have your ELD salaries and benefits, and then your salary and benefits for the bilingual secretary. And we had talked about the yes/no. Oh, that's okay, Mrs. Fi, thank you. All right, for the 2324, as you can see right now, it's your educational salaries and benefits for ELD specialists and the salary and benefits for your bilingual secretary. Any questions so far on those? Now, this is your ATSI grant, which I had talked about previously. This is your fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty. It is not recurring. We're going to be using it for technology, our flat panels with screens at Schaefer. This is the high school grant, over a hundred and fifty-five thousand, almost a hundred and fifty-six thousand. This is, again, for educational technology. This will be for nine to twelve for Chromebooks. Again, trying to push towards that one-to-one Chromebook initiative. This is your seven percent set-aside after-school. Now, you will see with the summer enrichment, there is a question mark there. The reason there's a question mark is we are still investigating what our summer enrichment program may look like. We do not know if we will continue with it. So, again, that's why there is a question mark there. We will know more within the next month of where we're going and what we will be doing for the summer enrichment. And then there was also educational technology that we are putting in there, again, to look for that one-to-one Chromebook initiative. This is additional summer school, so you can use after-school and summer school for summer school enrichment. So as you can see, the 2021, we had to pay for the crossing guards for summer enrichment to get everybody safely to summer enrichment, so we had buses, and then we had students who walked. We have, again, a question mark for summer enrichment, so we split it between the two grants. Again, we're not sure if this is going to be recurring. We have to see which program we're using for summer enrichment and look at the data to see if it did work. And then, again, educational technology. Your seven percent set-aside for social-emotional classroom, you're going to see social-emotional classroom and also professional development. With this, these are going to your SAP counselors, Student Assistance Program counselors. They are both helping the students and the staff. This is your social-emotional development. I want to look at professional learning partnership. If you see that, twenty thousand dollars. This is something that's a district initiative with professional learning, looking at the science of learning and how we can best support our students and staff. Yes, Dr. Lee?
This is a continuation of what was previously our Franklin Institute-think-tank relationship. It's been very, very helpful, successful, and well-received as well. And it also provides for some administrative leadership, professional development.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
And the proposal will also be presented in Instructional Affairs, probably not until May at this point.
But I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what the professional learning partnership was.
Guys, I have your languages if you're curious.
That'd be great.
We had thirty-eight different languages represented this year in Ben Salem. The top five were Spanish, Gujarati, Russian, Bengali, and Arabic. And Pashto was a close sixth place. The biggest increases were just, we had a large influx of different types of Spanish-speaking countries, specifically Guatemala, Colombia, and Ecuador. And we also had a large number of Afghan refugees come to Ben Salem this year.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. All right, our next one is reading improvement. Again, this was a set-aside grant. We are using this, as Mrs. Hinshaw had said, we're talking about my view and my perspective, the new reading program. We are going to be using the money for this for professional development. All right, and it's not reoccurring. The next one was the other learning loss. This is educational software. This was going to the high school for Study Island, a few other items. Again, we talked about what yes/no means. We had it budgeted, but, again, we don't know whether we'll continue to need it or not. All right, so these, I just did overall costs by year. I know it's a lot in here. But I just wanted to show you what non-recurring costs we have, what recurring costs we have, and then also any costs we're still deciding on, which are questionable costs, which a lot of the times, the board, you will need to decide whether we're going to be continuing with these. Okay, next slide. This is the 2122 school year. As you can see, we have gone through each grant, exactly what everything is, whether it's recurring, non-recurring, or a questionable cost, or we talked about the yes/no. If you have any questions with these slides, please let me know. This was your 2223 school year. Again, all of the costs, recurring, non-recurring, and costs that we still have questions about. Any questions? 2324, it's the same thing. I thought it was a really good idea, and Mr. Steffi thought, just to do an overview of the costs by year. And then, again, then we put in one that's overall cost. So we did it by year, and now you have your overall cost of what is recurring, what is non-recurring, and what are any questionable costs. And when I mean questionable costs, we have to look at the data. Also, you need to, as a school board, you will need to decide where we move next. Any questions?
I don't have, well, I do have a question. Not specifically about the presentation or your numbers. Thank you. Would you mind being with us again at Budget Workshop III in the event our board colleagues have any questions? It's a lot.
It's a lot to digest. There's a lot of numbers. There was a lot. But, yes, you can reach me at any time, any questions that you have, but I can be here, yes.
Well, thank you for that.
I did want to point out, if, the one thing I think is important, if you look at the previous if you look at the previous three slides, the review of the S R grants, overall cost by year, 2122, you can see it was $4,706,000. 2223, it was $4,778,000. And 2324, it was $4,686,000. So what that means is, to your point, on a recurring basis, we're using this $17.3 million to offset approximately $4.7 million each year. So what we would recommend at a minimum is tax increases to make up within the next three years replacement of that $4.7 million. And any additional tax increases offset by increases in state funding to account for increase in costs such as health benefits, salaries, inflationary costs, things of that nature. So right now, we're looking at that funding shortfall of about $4.7 million, plus any other costs that are in those questionable ones that the board would decide whether or not they want. Like the SAP counselors, right now, that's not in the recurring cost. So if the board decides they want those SAP counselors to continue, that would be an additional recurring cost.
The 2223 kind of has everything in there, and that's $5.6 million. That has the social emotional and the, I think the other positions.
Well, that 2223, the total is $5.6 million. If you go, and that's a summation of the recurring costs of $4.77 million, recurring costs that we already have budgeted, $500,000, and questionable costs of just under $400,000. So the one you know that you have to make up is $4,778,000.
So you talked about an increase to offset that $4.5 million in the next several years by a percentage over each year. That only catches us up to the first year where this is no longer, these funds are no longer available. Or does that get us to a point, because then you'll have the year after that? Are you considering year over year?
Well, that, and this goes to your question last month. If you can go to the next slide. You had asked for the Act One history and the Act One projections. Keep on. So this shows the Act One history, the breakdown, the employment cost index, and the statewide average weekly wage. And those two indices are averaged out, and that's how Act One is calculated. And this shows the history. And then you also see the projection moving forward. And I've highlighted those in grayscale. So you can see where we've been, where we're at. The one thing I did not change, because I thought about doing some type of average, but our assessment history is pretty volatile. I was thinking of maybe doing, maybe like a 10-year average. But some years were up, like, I don't know what happened back in 1112 or something, but our assessments increased by $25 million. Then they'll increase by a million. They can go down. I mean, you can see. Oh. So I don't foresee anything where we're going to have a $25 million increase. But COVID crushed us. We lost close to 9 million. So I didn't want to put any type of average in there because our assessment history is volatile. Having said that, over time, it goes up. It's kind of like the stock market. I mean, it goes up and it goes down, and it goes up, it goes down. But over time, you'll see a gradual increase in your total assessed value. So basically, what we did here on this first projection is we took what the Act One index is projected for next year and what the Act One index is projected for the following years. And this is the furthest out that we saw any estimates going out to 2526. And you can see, based on your current assessed value of $646,943,000. And if we were to increase 50% of the Act One index, this coming year would be 2.8 mils. That would generate $1,738,000. And that's based on our collection rate. We don't, that's not at 100%. Historically, we collect around 95%. So at a 95% collection rate, going up 50% of the Act One index, you'll see an additional $1.7 million. And then again, we would propose a minimum increase of another 50% based on that Act One index. That would be 3.6 mils, and that would be 2.2 million. And just showing this out over the next four years, if you were to do a 50% increase, you would more than make up, you would be up over $8 million. So you could easily eclipse that amount. I mean, actually, if you do that in the next three years, you'll be above where that funding cliff is. And this doesn't account for any increases in state aid, which we're hoping for a pretty sizable increase from the state. Next slide. The next slide shows this at 100%. If the district were to go to the Act One index, increase taxes at 100%, you can see what that scenario is. You can see it's, it's well over three, it's almost $3.5 million first year, $4.5 million, $4.7 million, and $4 million based on the projected Act One increase. So the board could do any type of mix of that. They may want to increase all, one year and then have a minimal or no increase. It's at the discretion of the board how you want to increase that. But this just shows you the projections. This is kind of like a worst-case scenario because it does not take into account any assessment growth. And over time, your assessments will increase.
It could decrease if we, if we get, if we get a market turn.
It could decrease. Well, yeah, it could decrease. But like, over long term, you're not going to have, and like I said, you're volatile. That's why I said you can go down a year, you can go up a year. But over time, you go back 10 years and you go forward 10 years. Over time, it's kind of like the stock market. It's going to go up, it's going to go down, but it's going to be on an upward trajectory.
The short-term could get hit with something here.
Oh, definitely, short-term you could, just like the stock market. Any questions on the Act One, Act One projections? No problem. I thought it was, it was a good suggestion. And that concludes our budget presentation for this evening. Next month, on the 28th, we'll have elementary schools, middle schools, high school, transportation facilities, and athletics and co-curricular. Any questions on the presentations tonight? It's a lot of information. I can't stress enough, the, the S R funds, it's, it's very complicated. It's a lot of work Lauren has done and with the entire team in trying to, it's like a huge dixie puzzle in how to allocate it year by year and where to put it, how to offset it. It's, it's kind of a mix on what's best for students and staff as well as district finances. It's, it's kind of a blend of all three of those things, so. But I think, I think our team's done a good job with the S R funds.
I agree, and thank you all. It's been a lot of collaboration, connectivity, and communication for, for a while now. So thank you.
So just to bring this full circle, just to let the public know, we did not meet in executive session prior to this. And I'll just run through the list of upcoming dates coming up. April 5th is instructional affairs. April 12th, wellness committee. April 12th, personnel. April 12th, policy. April 13th, business affairs and technology. April 18th, co-curricular. And the sports association meeting. April 20th is committee of the whole. The 21st is public relations and outreach committee. The 26th is the regular action meeting. And the 28th is the budget work sessions three. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. So don't everybody go anywhere. We're going to roll right into this. For speed and efficiency, we're not going to.